Call to order the Verona Common Council Meeting, Monday, October 22, 2018, at 7:01 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the role?
Alder Person Cronin.
Present.
Alder Person Gaskell.
Here.
Alder Person Journey.
Here.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Present.
Thank you. Next we'll have public comment. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so. Anyone from the public? No? All right. Next up we will move to item five, approval of the minutes from the October 8, 2018 Common Council Meeting. Motion, comments, corrections?
Approval?
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Any corrections or questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business, I've got a couple of things. One of, which is the City of Verona's proclamation for Halloween trick-or-treat hours, so if you will. In the interest of promoting Halloween safety for the Verona area children, I, Lupdi, as Mayor of the City of Verona, hereby proclaim the official hours of trick-or-treating in the City of Verona to be between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM on Wednesday, October 31, 2018. Now, of course, sign and date this and return it to the clerk. I also wanted to make an announcement that we, the city has a couple very useful handbooks. One, the Handbook for Wisconsin Police and Fire Commissions, the Powers and Duties of the Wisconsin Mayors, and then a General League of Wisconsin Municipalities Handbook for Wisconsin Municipal Officials. I'm looking at the PFC one, but if anyone is interested in getting some background on what the League of Municipalities says about councils and whatever else, let me know and I can function as the library, I guess. A brief follow-up from last meeting about the council rep to the school board committee, and I had asked Dean, based on feedback from the council, as if we could have a sort of rotating thing, and he mentioned that he would rather have one person do it. We don't need to take any official action tonight, but if somebody would like to volunteer, I kind of got the impression nobody was too eager to step forward. Alder, Posey?
Do we have a clear understanding of what they're expecting our role to be? Are we a part of things in the committee? Are we meant to be representing the city there? What is the role that they're expecting for the alder to be there?
I am not sure from the email. I don't know if anyone had, want to take a crack at what the school district was getting at? No?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, maybe we should get some clarification. I know everyone here is, got plenty of things outside of, you know, just this body committees and then, of course, family obligations. Maybe if we could get some clarification from the superintendent, that would be helpful.
Okay. I will do that. And, oh, Alder Cole.
Also, we did know that there were several meetings that did fall on, like, council meeting nights, so if clarification could include, is it okay to, you know, miss a certain amount of meetings, or are they really looking for somebody to attend, you know, 100% of the time?
Yeah.
I did bring that issue up at the IDAC meeting this past week, and they were okay with a person missing a couple meetings, but they prefer to have one person versus multiple people.
Alder Touche?
Are we the only city invited? Because I know the Verona area school district represents three cities and a town.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Alder Posey and then Alder Gaskell?
I do recall from the email that they did invite Fitchburg. I don't recall about Oregon. Can I read the paragraph?
Alder Gaskell's got the email.
Okay. "One alder each from the City of Verona and Fitchburg to be a member of the Attendance Area Advisory Committee. The committee is charged with developing recommendations regarding elementary and middle school boundaries and for and within VASD to take effect starting 2020 and 2021." And then there'll also be some involvement in the lift and shift of the four elementary schools, so how the schools are moving around, so. It's a two-and-a-half-hour-long meeting, once a month.
You're not really selling it. All right, well, I will follow up with Dean. If anyone feels a moment of inspiration and wants to just do it, I feel like you could step forward and volunteer and nobody would fight you for it. So, all right, moving on, number seven, announcements. Does anyone have any? Alder Journey?
So, as a representative of the Dementia Friendly Committee, I attended the Dane County Dementia Friendly Training on October 11, along with Julie Larson, who is the new case manager for the Senior Services Center. And it's the Senior Services Center that conducts the training to the area businesses and is training on recognizing and responding to behaviors of citizens with dementia or Alzheimer's.
Thank you. Other announcements?
I just wanted to let everyone know, remind people that we are having early voting. So, this week, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. This Saturday, October 27, at the library, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Next, Monday, October 29 through Thursday, November 1, from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And then on Friday, November 2, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Other announcements? Seeing none, we will move on to the Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Based on the October 15 Committee at the whole meeting regarding economic development and community development authorities, we'll be having our first CDA meeting November 8 at 8 o'clock. The agenda will be reflect the items that were discussed at the council and provide the CDA to identify how they want to move forward with the priorities and the timing of all those issues that were discussed at the council meeting. The 2018 Dane County Housing Summit, identify closing the housing gap, is Thursday, October 25, from 8:30 to 12:30. It'll be at the Alliant Energy Center, and it has a number of Dane County communities that are moving forward with housing issues. If anyone's interested in attending, there is an online registration that I'll, I can send out the link to. But if you go through the full Housing Summit and the lunch, it's $18. And this is a, it's organized by the Dane County Housing Initiative.
Thank you. I believe Catherine is going, is that correct? Catherine Holt?
Oh, yes, yes. I will also be attending.
Oh, great. Can we get an update, then, maybe of some interesting things you learned or pick up at it, please?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
And the last item is a request for a potential special meeting. As we're looking through for the budget coming up in November, we usually have the budget presentation on the first meeting in November and the budget, public hearing and action on the second, the second meeting of the month. This year, the second meeting is the 26th. That would be the week that we are implementing a new finance software. So, we're hoping that there would be support to have a special meeting on Monday, November 19, for the public hearing and action on the 2019 budget. That would allow us to have the presentation on the 12th and the public hearing on the 19th. If there's concern regarding public, or special meeting, we can have a special committee of the whole meeting on the 5th for the public hearing, or, I'm sorry, for the presentation and take action on the budget on the 12th. But our preference would be for the 19th, and if council would provide some feedback regarding that.
Does that timeline work for people?
Yeah, there's a Plan Commission meets on the 5th.
It's the night before the midterm election, so the-
Oh, it's on the 6th.
Plan Commission would be in meeting the 7th. And that's also another reason why we're suggesting the 19th, because we'd be in the council chambers when they're trying to set up for the midterm on the 6th.
Those timeline people? Okay.
Very good.
All right, yeah, if anyone has any objections, raise them as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you.
Alder Cronin?
Just a couple of things. One, I'm also registered for the Housing Summit, so I won't be able to provide feedback on that, too. And then a question on the CDA meeting, is this now standing meeting time? Because it's my understanding that the council representative can't be available to attend that meeting.
No, it's not the, it's not going to be the standing time. It's the time when the most people from the CDA would be able to meet without going into the next month. So, yeah, I'm given instructions so that the standing time is available for the council representative.
And will you be attending that meeting, or will there be any city representation?
Yes. Our Economic Development Manager will be attending. I'm not sure if the city planner will be there, but I will be there for, yes, I will be there.
I'll be there as well, so if you have any questions or feedback, just definitely let me know. Other questions on the Administrator's Report? All right, thank you. Next up we'll have the Engineers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two quick updates. I'm sure everybody's noticed that Main Street, County M, is open. The Bike Pad Project opened Wednesday at noon, October 17. Still some punch list items to work through. Public Works is working with the contractor on those, and the Fireman's Park splash pad work continues, grading on the soccer field, splash pad work, and grading for the retaining wall.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the Engineers' Report? Alder Cronin?
I just want to let you know that I have heard from several constituents who were thrilled with the work that's been done on M, and were really pleased with how it turned out, and also that that makes that connection from their neighborhoods to downtown.
I'll just add, I completely agree with what Alder Cronin said. A lot of people have been asking about it, and I think it, it's not done, but I think it looks good, so I feel good about it. Any other comments or questions on the Engineers' Report? All right. With that, we will move on to the committee reports. Finance Committee, Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd start with making a motion regarding the payment of the bills amounting $2,934,283.06.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin. Alder Kemp?
Just for the sake of discussion, there are a number of payments that are larger. One, in the amount of $158,488.87 for the Fireman's Parks, Fireman's Park improvements. There is a payment amounting $116,250. That is a right-of-way for PD and Woods to M. And then also we have a payment to the City of Madison amounting 101, excuse me, $1,190,166.49. That will also be reimbursed to the City of Verona. Those are some of the larger ones at this point.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor of paying the bills say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Kemp?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I also have a resolution, I'm going to make a motion regarding Resolution R-18055, approving the 2019 Fitch-Rona EMS operating and capital budgets.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second? Second by Alder Posey. Alder Kemp?
Again, for the sake of discussion, an annual meeting of the Fitch-Rona EMS District was conducted on October 18, 2018, for the purposes of reviewing the district's annual report and the 2019 requested operating and capital budgets. The 2019 Fitch-Rona operating budget includes an increase to staff, a third frontline ambulance for district. The 2019 total proposes operating expenditure for the district is $2,798,978, of which the City of Verona's share is $517,278, an increase of 19.88% from the 2018 budget. Total proposed capital budget includes an expenditure of $344,512, of which the City of Verona's share is $147,030.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments? I'll add one myself. I was at the meeting. The Town of Verona approved the budget. The City of Fitchburg sort of approved the budget, with the caveat that if their budget changes, then they're not committed necessarily to the EMS budget, so probably going to add the ambulance, but we'll see. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution R-18055, approving the 2019 Fitch-Rona EMS operating and capital budgets, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Kemp?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Next up we will move on to 10B, Parks, Recreation and Forestry Commission. Alder Ricky?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the Stompful Field Joint Use Agreement between the City of Verona and Edgewood Incorporated.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Journey. Alder Ricky?
The amended agreement, originally approved April 28, 2008, extends the agreement to allow Edgewood College baseball team to have priority use of Stompful Field during fall and spring seasons through 2022. Priority use of the field is in exchange for the replacement of the scoreboard prior to the 2019 season.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Stompful Field Joint Use Agreement between the City of Verona and Edgewood, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Ricky?
That is all.
Thank you. Next up we'll move on to item 11, new business. And on A, we have discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number 18-930, amending Title III, Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordnances, City of Verona, relating to hotel motel room tax. Mr. McCorskey?
Thank you. This amendment provides for the collection of room tax for short-term rental housing units utilizing lodging marketplaces and renting for all or part of residential dwellings for fee or for, and for fewer than 29 consecutive days. The room tax is collected consistent with the tax collected by hotels currently at 7%. This is in line with state legislation that allows short-term, or what the state considers tourist rooming houses with the collection of room tax.
Questions, comments on the ordinance? Alder Kemp?
Yes, if I may. How exactly would the city enforce the collection of these taxes?
Well, that's, although these two items identified on the agenda are separate, it would come to identifying the units and requesting information that, from them, similar to what we request information from hotels regarding number of stays and such. And state level, they, these rental units are required to have registrations of people utilizing the short-term rental. So, they should have the records in order to, for us to enforce that.
Okay, so to be clear, if someone's doing an Airbnb on Main Street, then obviously, and, you know, they're consistently renting their property out, then obviously they'd want to get an operator's license, which, or, excuse me, a room, like, housing license, which we're going to discuss shortly. But there are events like the American Family Golf Tournament that happens in the summer, so if an individual homeowner wanted to, say, rent their home out to a golf pro for $10,000, which legitimately happens once a year, is there anything that we can do about that? Or is that kind of, are we just specifically talking about, you know, Airbnb, things of that nature?
I think I'll refer to the attorney, because there's a difference of using the marketplaces and going beyond not using the marketplaces.
So, the concern that you've raised is a valid one. Other municipalities have adopted, the ordinance is before you tonight, it just does two things. It changes, adds some of the definitions that have been added to the statute based on the short-term rental, and then we just added one section to incorporate short-term rental. Municipalities have had a difficulty trying to collect on this, and there's actually some materials that the mayor had mentioned, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities before, and some booklets that he has. They have, they have a new booklet, too, and then some guidance as to how to try to track it down, and in fact, some municipalities have in fact hired a third party to kind of play that role. When it comes to the Airbnbs versus the one, the person who just does it one time, I think that that's going to probably play part of a role of what do you want to regulate? In other words, the way that this language is drafted right now, I think there's an argument, and probably a strong one, that this, that this is, I mean, the person who rents it one night is a short-term rental. The definition of short-term rental means a residential dwelling unit that is offered for rent for a fee and for fewer than 29 consecutive days. You know, I think what they're getting at there with the 29 consecutive days is we do recognize that certain people own homes, they may get a job elsewhere, and so then they rent their home out for a longer period of time. But the fact that this home may be only rented once for one time a year, I think still qualifies it for purposes of a short-term rental under the room tax, the ordinance that you're adopting right now. And so we should, you know, we would have the ability to try to collect from that individual. Part of the problem that we're going to have is, how do we know that they're going to be there? And I think that gets at the next, I mean, there's, one is, there's language within the statutes that basically say if you're operating a short-term rental, and, and when I say statutes, the Wisconsin statutes, if you're operating a short-term rental and the municipality has a room tax that applies to your short-term rental the same way it applies to hotels and motels, you have an obligation to make that payment. Now, how are you going to find them? That is where the league has come up with some materials to try to assist in that endeavor. And also, there's going to be potentially mechanisms that the City of Verona can implement when it comes to, if you want to operate a short-term rental within our city, you may have to come to us, for example, to get a license, and that's going to be a mechanism that would allow us to at least know where these are being operated. But there's not, there's not a clear answer to your question as to, can we guarantee that we're going to be collecting from everybody? It's not going to be as easy as it is with a hotel or a motel that's within the community. The first step in that direction, though, is the adoption of this ordinance that at least gives us the right to collect from them.
So, if we've, you've mentioned the first step. Have we done, or have we looked at other municipalities to find out what the second, third, and fourth step is?
We have, and then that's kind of the next agenda item that we'll be able to comment on.
All right, thank you.
Other questions, comments on the proposed ordinances or motions? Alder Touche?
Do we have a sense of how big this problem is in the City of Verona? I just, I honestly, I mean, I'm sure it's happening, but I'm just kind of curious how much.
Well, so, this is my recommendation to you. My recommendation is that you adopt this ordinance, because I do think it's reasonable that if you have these short-term rentals operating within the city, they are effectively acting as quasi-hotels and motels, and there's no reason why you wouldn't want to collect the room tax from them, the same that you collect from a hotel or motel, at least from my recommendation standpoint. What exactly you want to do with short-term rentals, I think is the exact topic for the next agenda item. Because exactly how much you want to regulate them, if at all, is, reasonable minds can disagree on that. And I would say that you, in theory, could adopt this ordinance that is before you right now, and when you get to the next item, if you don't want to regulate short-term rentals in any way, shape, or form, other than having this room tax ordinance, that is what some communities have done. In other words, a lot of communities have adopted this ordinance that allows them to collect room tax from short-term rentals, but in no way, they don't regulate short-term rentals in any other fashion.
And this is maybe a question for the council. Can we hear the, I'd like to hear the explanation for the second one as well, before even considering voting on this first one, because I just feel they're tied. And I just, maybe it's philosophical for me, but I hate creating ordinances, per seque having ordinances, it just, I think just makes life more complicated than it needs to be.
You can join the two agenda items and have a discussion on both at the same time, if you want.
Mr. McCorskey, did you have some?
Well, I think we've been seeing an increase in the calls asking what we have to do to, if we want to rent out our house or rent out a room. We get a number of calls regarding, you know, what the city's regulations are. We also just, we had a discussion in council regarding a neighborhood issue that the people in the neighborhood said, well, we think that's a short-term rental. Is it registered? And, you know, working with the public health, the county Public Health Department, trying to identify that as a rental. Looking on the online sites, it looks like there's been a progression of number of units in and around Verona, and it, usually different times of year, a lot more pop up, whether it's a big sporting event, not even in Verona, but in the Madison area, that prompts a number of people using this, and then, you know, other corporate events that prompt this as well. So, it is kind of progressing.
Other questions, comments on the ordinance or potential motions? Alder Journey?
I move that ordinance number 18-930, amending Title III, Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordnance, City of Verona, Wisconsin, relating to hotel motel room tax be approved.
Motion by Alder Journey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky. Any further comments or questions on the proposed ordinance?
If I could make a comment, Christine just looked up Airbnb in Verona, Wisconsin here, and there's quite a few. So, if I could, I think this is something we should at least look into, and then I kind of would like to, I wish we could join the two topics together to find out what the solutions are before we take a vote. I think I agree with Evan on that. I'm not in favor of, you know, putting an ordinance out there if it makes things more complicated. It looks like there is a need for it, though, just based on one simple internet search. I kind of want to know what the remedies are, though, before I vote on anything, if that's possible.
It is possible. I mean, moving on to the next section would essentially, or next item on the agenda would effectively be part of the discussion on the motion, at least that's what I'm hearing, at least two Alders say. It's, they are related, there's no question about that.
All right, well, if we can get unanimous consent, we can move on to the next one and then come back to the disordinance.
Just to be clear, there has been, I just want to make sure, there has been a motion and a second on the ordinance, though, too. So, just-
Can I ask for unanimous consent, or something?
Oh, yeah, certainly you can, but I just want to make sure that if, even when we do come back, another motion won't have to be made.
Okay.
That's my only point.
Okay. All right, well, let's talk about the tourist rooming house license. Mr. McCorskey?
Sure. What you have in your packet is a draft ordinance for licensing a tourist rooming house unit for short-term rentals. Staff would like to get feedback from council on the license process for identifying tourist rooming- from council on the license, uh, process for identifying, um, tourist rooming, uh, units in the city. This is a basic, um, ordinance. Based on, um, feedback, you can add more, um, standards or conditions to it, uh, to more regulation, or you can, um, leave it as just a licensing of the, uh, of the unit itself. Um, but we, we just kind of put this in so that the, the discussion would come up. Um, and we weren't sure if, you know, if, um, zoning issues or any other thing, uh, would be, would be talked about as far as, uh, uh, conditions. Um, so, right now, what you see before you is just for licensing. Someone comes in, pays a certain amount, it gets, um, uh, it would have to be inspected, and then, um, that would be the, basically the, the amount of, um, standards or conditions on, on the short-term rentals.
Thank you for that explanation. Um, questions, comments from the council? Uh, Alder Gaskell?
I have a couple, please. First of all, I would just like to make it clear that we are addressing this because we have a lot of requests from people who want to do Airbnb out of their own home and not as a reaction to a neighborhood situation where, um, we are assuming something's going on in a household that maybe just has a different way of how their family uses that house. Okay? I, I think that's an important distinction we need to make. In terms of, I'd like to know, who, whose, whose department does this fall under?
It would probably fall under administration with finance taking on the, uh, the enforcement.
And what is the fee? Has that been determined?
No, it's not. And, um, I tried to, to find, um, you know, looking at different municipalities. Typically, the, the, the fee for the, um, uh, initial inspection, um, is, um, you know, relatively low, um, one or $200, based on how much involvement. Um, you know, there's, there's some, uh, some cities that are using, still using Dane County, uh, public health as a, an inspection. That comes with a, uh, a fee as well. If you're doing that, you can, you don't have to inspect as much. Um, but then there's a, a reoccurring annual, uh, renewal. Um, so it would be up to council to make that determination. I would suggest that we would tie it to the, the amount of activity needed to, uh, to move that process forward.
Um, so transient, is that standard language for this ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
If that's taken from the definition from the statutes.
Okay. And then I, I do have a little bit of a concern. I think this is a good idea, but I'm concerned about, um, C, where we're talking about how you can effectively, as a neighbor, shut down an Airbnb. I think we're going to have to really consider that and put a little bit more language around that.
So, yeah, I mean, there's a, different municipalities have addressed this differently. Um, you, you don't have to put any regulations in place. If you, you know, on one, one side of the spectrum is we're not going to regulate, uh, short-term rentals. And, you know, one statute calls them tourist room, how, tourist rooming house, and the other statute calls them short-term rental. I'm just going to refer to short-term rental, if that's okay. They're talking about the same thing. You can decide, "We're not going to regulate short-term rental at all," because under Chapter 97 of the Wisconsin statutes, they're, they already have to get a license through the state to operate as a short-term rental. And municipalities have decided, "You know what? That's enough. All, all we're going to require these people to do is, is, uh, satisfy whatever the statutory requirements are, and as a municipality, we don't feel like that we need to get involved." I think the middle ground is some form of a license. So maybe not everything that you, I mean, for example, if you, if you were inclined to do this, you could, you could require them to get a license, but it could basically be the license is, you're going to have to demonstrate to us that, um, you, you have the license through the state, and really we're just using our own licensing process as a mechanism to make sure that you're in our municipality, because we also have this room tax, and they're going to work together. And basically, this is just a way for us to know that you're here, and so that we can collect the room tax from you. That's kind of the lowest form of regulation that you may have. I think on the higher end of regulation, and some municipalities have done this, is you don't use a licensing process, but you use a conditional use permit process that basically says if you want to operate a short-term rental in our city, we can't ban them. The state statutes are clear that we can't prohibit them, but you could adopt, uh, an amendment to your zoning code, in which case then, if somebody wants to do short-term rental, it would go to plan commission, and then it would come to the common council. I, I think the municipalities who have looked at the conditional use permit process, they're a little bit more concerned about the impact on neigh, on neighborhoods. You know, they've heard complaints from people that say, "Wait a second. I moved into a single-family residential district, and now all of a sudden, my neighbor is renting their house out every single weekend, and so it doesn't feel like..." So I'm, I am concerned about noise issues. I have concern about parking issues. And there's ways that you can build that into a conditional use permit ordinance. Now, I will tell you that noise is already regulated. We already have an ordinance on this, um, within the city code that deals with, with noise. And so whatever you do in a conditional use permit process or licensing, it basically, you're going to say, "We're going to apply the noise ordinance to you," which may not even be necessary since it's already on the books. The, you know, some people are concerned with outdoor storage when you have people staying there. Well, we already have ordinances that deal with outdoor storage, depending on what the zoning district that you're in. The one that, you know, if you're going to use a conditional use permit process, the one that you're really going to be getting at is probably parking. Because for the most part, we wouldn't have anything within our code that would prohibit on-street parking, for example, in a residential zoning district unless there's a snow emergency. And so to the extent that you have a lot of people who are parking there because they've come in town for a Badger game, but, you know, that's a, you could also have that where, you know, I own a home, and all of a sudden I got, you know, 10 family members who are coming in town because it's homecoming and they want to go to the game, and that's necessarily going to impact parking. I mean, so there's a, a broad spectrum that you can, you can pursue, and there are definitely, more municipalities than not haven't even, I think, addressed this issue with, with regulation. They say, "The state already regulates it. That's enough for us," but they have adopted the room tax because their thought process is, "We know they're operating here, and we feel that it's appropriate that if you're operating what is effectively a business, that you should have to pay the room tax, just like a hotel or motel."
I mean, based on that, I have no interest in doing a conditional use permit every single time. That, I don't even think that we'd cover our cost on that for staff time. And that's something to think about when we're determining the license fee. Are we making, are we creating a deficit for staff time? Are we covering staff time with that license or not? But I kind of like what's been suggested, sort of the middle ground. You know, follow what the state does and be able to collect room tax.
I'll just add myself. I think, I, I completely agree with Alder Gaskell about not having a conditional use permit. I think we could, we could see the planning commission and the council tied up, we, a ton of our time, and I think it should be like a sort of a fair impartial process where it doesn't need to be a political decision. Um, as far as, you know, potential, uh, non-renewing a license, I, I think personally, I'd rather have that under the purview of the police department. And, and if they are constantly dealing with, with issues, uh, they could be kind of an impartial authority. But, but yeah, I, I think you probably need something to deal with, with bad actors, even if they're going to be hopefully a small, small number. Um, other, uh, questions or comments? Uh, Alder Kim?
Um, I do, I just wanted to clarify. You know, the comment you made about having 10 family members coming in for a Badger game, I mean, I think anyone sitting up here on the dais could count the number of times they've had people show up, and they have quite a few people in their home. I think what we're trying to nip in the bud before it happens is, particularly with the parking idea, is, you know, a, a home where there's an inordinate amount of people parked out in front and living in what used to be a single-family home and what that can do to a neighborhood. So I do have some concerns. Is there a, a way we can remedy that by perhaps even limiting the amount of people per single-family home that could be renting at any one time?
We could look into that. I mean, I know that that is a, uh, a regulation that has been put in as part of the conditional use permit process, basically saying, "Okay, what is the size of your home?" And then, you know, there are standards for how many people that you can have there. Uh, we may be able to do that through a licensing process as opposed to a conditional use permit process, but I think that's something that we would have to look into. I mean, so the, the, the state statutes are clear that we can, we can have, we can license them, even though the state licenses them. The question, and then this is an unresolved issue at this point, the question is if through the licensing process, if you're putting in much greater, much more stringent standards than what is in the state licensing process, you open the door for an argument that says, "Wait a second. We understand that the statutes allow you to license us, but now you are putting in, you know, on, on the actual standards themselves, the state has effectively spoken on what those standards are, and if you go above and beyond what they are, you risk that, you know, the legal challenge." But that being said, I think, I think it's certainly worthwhile to look into it, and then also dig deeper into what exactly are the standards that the state imposes, because it may be that certainly when it comes to number of people staying in a house, that may be one of the standards that they've identified.
Minimum square footage.
Yeah.
Alder Kim?
Uh, one final thing I'm still failing to understand, because if this does fall under the purview of, you know, administration and the finance committee, I'm, I'm still failing to understand how this would be actually enforced. If there's someone out there...
So there's, within, within our state, within the state statutes and within our room tax ordinance itself, as it exists right now, there are processes in place, not for short-term rentals right now, but for hotels who haven't paid. And I can tell you that not in Verona, but in another community, I have gone through the enforcement process dealing with hotels that haven't paid. And so there is a mechanism in place that allows us to enforce it.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, other, uh, questions or comments?
So I'm looking on Airbnb, and I think what it does is it spreads them all out. If you actually look what's in Verona for, I just picked a weekend in November, it looks like there are two available. So I think it's not, let's not, I, I agree with Evan. I don't want to create something for the sake of creating it, anticipating a massive problem that we're never going to have anyway. I mean, I think we have it during probably, um, user group meeting week, right? And then the golf tournament.
I think we...
And then Evan?
Sorry. Uh, I think we had a number of them during the, um, the CrossFit Games, uh, because there's certain, there's certain times when you, when you put in a date, put in a couple dates, because it goes from two to probably 10, and it, you know, it changes based on the, the dates that you put in. Um, but, um, you know, the, the regional things are also having effect. The triathlon is having, uh, there's a number of them during that time period. Um, so it's, it, it, there's a number of times during the year that it, that it bumps up. So...
Alder, Alder Touche?
Yeah, I, I feel like we're chasing pennies. I mean, hotel rooms bring in a lot of revenue. They, these are private owners, maybe trying to cover some expenses, or, I'll be honest, the thought of some stranger staying in my house is, uh, not very appealing, but, um, obviously it works for others. And I'm, I'm not trying to put my impression on everybody, but, um, I, I, I think the idea is great. I think if we were a larger city, it would, might make sense. I just think for the 10,000 or 11,000 person in Verona, I just think we're just adding more complication to things that really doesn't, I personally feel isn't necessary, unless someone can give me a better, a more compelling argument. Um, I, I did my search, and I really tried focusing on the city, and I originally counted eight, and I got up to 13 when I really focused it. In fact, I found someone I knew, which made me giggle. Um, but, um, I'm like, "Let's party at their house." No, but, um, you know, I just really, a $50 rental for two nights, it's a $100 rental. What are we talking about? A couple bucks in taxes? And how much time are we talking about for them to deal with? You know, where's this money go? I mean, I guess if businesses like Airbnb handled the tax and made it easy for them, it just seems like, to Chad's point, the enforcement, how much energy are we going to put into this? And how much energy are they going to put into this? What are we really doing? You know, I get, are we protecting the city? How are we protecting the city? You know, what are these tax dollars going towards? Well, they're going towards promoting the city. Or are we, are we promoting more Airbnbs? Because that's who we're taxing? I just, it just doesn't add up for me right now. So, I'm good.
Um, Alder Kim?
I will say, um, I by and large agree with Evan. The only thing that I am concerned about is, um, and I think this was maybe a few meetings ago where we had, um, a home somewhere, I think in District Three, that, that had been a problem, and, and a lot of the neighbors were concerned about short-term rentals. So I don't want to leave the impression that we should let this go unfettered for any length of time, particularly if there's issues with, you know, I mean, noise, or traffic, or parking, or just people renting, you know, their homes out to any person. Um, I think we need to be vigilant to that, but I tend to agree, I think, with Evan on the, on this issue. Um, if it's, you know, $50 to $100, and we're talking about seven, 7%, it's $7 that we're talking about. Um, $7 over hundreds of homes adds up, um, but we're not talking about hundreds of homes either. So I don't know if we need to be, uh, passing legislation that, um, you know, that, that makes things overly complicated to, um, you know, to a minimal, um, amount of money. So, that's my thought at this time.
Uh, Mr. Makroski?
I think you also have, uh, we have heard comments from, uh, the hotel agent, or hotels also. Um, you'll, when you get a lot of the, um, uh, short-term rentals without, uh, having a fair, fair advantage, uh, or fair field, uh, where, um, you know, you can go to a, a short-term rental and not pay those taxes and go to a hotel, it, it creates some concern for the hotels. And, you know, if, if there's a, a situation where there, it, it continues to, to build up, you'll see that the hotels, uh, will be getting the, getting the hit of it.
Alder Touche?
I understand that argument as a general hotel owner, but when we still have hotels trying to come to Verona and build, I really don't think we have a, an attendance problem right now. So I, I think generally I could see, you know, in other markets that being an issue. I don't think that's true for ours, though, at this time. I mean, when they stop wanting to build them, yeah, maybe. We got a lot for a small city.
I'm going to add, uh, myself for one, one question, I think, for Mr. Klenmeyer. Um, if, if we don't pass the, the first ordinance we talked about earlier, is it still possible to put conditions on, in, in the rare cases we have a bad actor, like selling drugs or something out of their house?
Well, I, I, at that point, I think what we would do is, um, well, we'll keep it in mind, the ordinance that you, that, that is before you tonight doesn't have any enforcement issues. This is just, we're going to collect, and then to the extent that it's difficult to collect, then we already have language in our code that talks about the processes. When, you know, the issue of bad actors, that is something that, um, what we would do is we would take a look at our, the, the provisions we have, you know, in place right now. The, 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 uh, the circumstances that you guys have identified at this point, you know, noise issues, we already have an ordinance in place that would be able to be utilized to, you have the conversations with the, with the property owner as to, you know, if they're renting out their house, if people are being too loud. If you have something as, as, uh, significant as the dealing of drugs, we already have ordinances that are in place there. The one that, the one, the only one that I've heard mentioned so far where we'd have to take a look at our code, but I think there's a possibility that we wouldn't have enforcement, is on parking. Because again, parking is something where I don't think that, you know, for most, my, my belief is probably for most streets where there are single-family residences, people can park on both sides of the street at this point unless there's a snow emergency, and then there aren't any, you know, two-hour limits or anything like that. And so, just like people, if they had a whole bunch of family members can park on the street, you could have people parking on the street for Airbnb. Admittedly, it's going to have a bigger impact, because, you know, you probably only have the family members over every once in a while, where if you're doing the Airbnb every weekend, then you could have, have that same parking concern. And that would be more of a, you know, there may be things that we could look at overall within our ordinances, if you didn't want to have anything specific to, to short-term rentals, but that would be the one spot where we might not have anything in place right now.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Alder, Alder Journey?
So I kind of lost the, uh, tracking. Does, does the state of Wisconsin, do they have a room tax in the state law?
The room tax is a municipal room tax.
Okay.
So we just have the ability to impose it upon the short-term rentals now.
Uh, Alder Posey?
I guess at this point, I'm feeling like I, you know, we've talked about state statutes, but we haven't had time to look at it. And this kind of come up, I feel like I'd like a little bit more time to do that research and learn more about what exactly we're looking at, because we're all getting on our, you know, various things here, looking at how many do we have, what, and we don't have any of that information. We don't have any of that data as what, how big this actually is. Um, and I guess I'm feeling like I need that to be able to say, you know, which way or the other, um, at this point in time.
Thank you. Um, Alder Ricky?
I just had a question about, could, could you please make the distinction between owner occupied at time of rental versus not? Because there are some definitions that refer to both, it looks like. So are we talking about whether or not the owner is on the premises?
Mr. Klenmeyer?
So owner, owner occupied, I, which, are you, are, are we looking at the definitions within the...
The 18-930... The 18-930? Like the for 1A? Under Section 351 definitions?
Yeah, so 1, so 1A is the bed and breakfast. And my belief is we do not, bed and breakfast is something that's, that's a definition, is a term that's already in our code, so we're just carrying it over. I don't believe that we apply the room tax to the bed and breakfast. The, the owner is the person who, who, who's owns the, so I'm, I'm the one who's owning my, or renting my property out for the short-term rental. Occupant is the person who is the, actually renting it for the short-term rental. And then, I mean, well, so, so what we've done is we've, and just so everyone's aware, all of these statutes that are in the ordinance that's before you, these are all taken directly from the state statutes, the section in, that deals with or allows municipalities to impose the room tax. And then the second section is just taking language that is already within our code and just adding short-term rentals in there. So again, the, the ordinance that's before you tonight, and I, and I appreciate the fact why, you know, everybody wants to consider this holistically, the ordinance before you tonight is, is all it does really is, is add to the list, hotels and motels, short-term rentals that we can connect, or collect the room tax. That's all, all it does. The bigger, broader issue as we get into, you know, when you look at the agenda number 11B, that, that's the broader issue of what exactly would you want to do with these short-term rentals from a regulatory standpoint?
Mr. McCroskey?
If I could just make one, a couple more comments. If you've got 10 short-term rental locations and they, they rent it out twice a month, that's 240 times where they, the hotel didn't get it, or we could collect on it. The, the rates for the short-term rentals go between 60 and, and $150 a night. So, you know, if you, if you get into 20 for two times, uh, two times a month, you're, you're looking at close to 500 rentals. So it, it compounds upon itself. So there are quite a few rentals going on. And, and I know for a fact, because there's a couple, or that there's at least one by me, that almost every weekend, there's, there's a rental. So, yeah, I have no problem with it. It's just, you can just see the, the amount of activity with all the different events going on. So when he, when you look at 10, it's not just, you know, 10 a year, it's, it's closer, you know, to 200 a year.
Alder Kemp?
So I, I get that and I get the math. I still, and I know, Brian, you've done a, a great job of telling us that there's a way that it's enforced, but what specifically is it? If someone in the city of Verona wants to rent out a room, and they don't go through the licensure process, and we find out about it, what will the city do to claim that tax? Because I don't know if I want to pass anything that doesn't have any teeth at all.
So, I'm just trying to find the existing. So what's going to happen is, in, in a quarterly basis, they're going to have to file reports with us. And so if they don't file a report, that's kind of the first step of, hey, you, you need to file the report. And, and, I mean, ultimately what happens is, if, if, if they don't file the report or if they file the report and we think that, you know, they messed with the math a little bit, we have the ability to, to review their books and do an audit. If, if it turns out that somebody is, is not paying us the amount of money that they're supposed to be paying us, then we could get to collect the amount that they owe us plus interest. I mean, I'm just kind of briefly, you know, the, the, when, when you talk about, you know, there's a, a section within our current code. So the current code is Chapter Five, Title Three. So when you get into Section 3-5-2, there's a Section D that talks about collection, the collection of tax, reporting periods, determination of tax by audits, failure to file a return, interest on unpaid taxes, delinquent returns and late fees and penalties. So, I mean, there's a, that's the process that's, I mean, I'm, does it, does, to kind of some of the points that have been made, my experience would be that if you have somebody who has not paid their tax, and you chase down that tax, when you ultimately get paid, have you probably spent more time in staff hours and potentially attorney fees to collect that money? Yes, you probably have. On the flip side of that, I would tell you that the vast majority of the time that you enforce any of your ordinances, you necessarily spend more money enforcing them than what you're collecting. But you do it based on the principle of the matter.
Well, but if I could jump in, like if you say we're enforcing a speeding ordinance and it costs us more money, that's like a public safety issue. So the public benefit would be like, yeah, someone went 30 over by a school zone and they could have killed some kid. So like, even if it costs a ton more money, we enforce it because it's for the public good. I guess, I guess what I would like to hear is why would, would enforcing, you know, bringing money out of people doing an Airbnb be in favor of the public good?
Oh, that's a policy decision on your part. I mean, if you don't want to, if, if, you know, there have been arguments that are discussions that have been part of this that says, look, this is a small enough issue that we don't feel like investing city time in this. And if you don't want, I mean, if you, you know, and then there's been counters, I think, because I've heard what Jeff has heard, said from hotels, but this is definitely a policy decision. If you, if you want to say, look, we're not going to collect a room tax because we think in some way, shape or form, it may act as a deterrent. And we, we, we believe these are good, not bad, and we don't think that they cause any problems. And because of that, not only are we not going to regulate them, we're just going to have the state regulate them, and in fact, we're not going to impose the room tax. There are policy reasons that support that decision. I, I, without question.
Other comments, questions from the council? If I don't see any, I will move back to the, the motion to approve the ordinance. Just to catch you all up, we are on the motion to approve ordinance number 18-930. Alder Gaskell?
Procedural question, if we, if we don't pass this, how does it come back to us?
Well, I, there have been some comments that says we want more time on this. And so one thing that you can do, because how it comes back to you can sometimes become procedurally difficult. One thing that you could do, if you, if you're inclined to do it, is you can amend your motion to say, look, we're going to table this for the time being until where there's more information. Because what I'm hearing right now, it seems like from some folks, is, well, we want to know whether or not we're going to regulate these in some way, shape or form, before we want to act on the room tax. Because if we ultimately decide that we, we're just going to let the state regulate these, and so we're not going to have any type of licensure process, and I haven't heard anybody supporting a conditional use permit process, if, if the idea is we're not going to regulate them, which means that we're not inclined to adopt the room tax, that then to, everything is going to be kind of decided together. And if that's where people are at, then to me, the, probably the appropriate way to, to deal with this is to say, if, if people are inclined to do it, the people who made the motion, to amend it to say, not a motion to approve, but a motion to table, so that you're not going to make a vote on it until you have the ability to discuss, you know, have everything come back to you at one time.
Couldn't someone just make a motion to defer table?
Well, I think you have a motion on the, on the table right now, so I think that-
Right, but you can, you can make a motion to defer the motion until we get more information from staff, too, right? Because you, I mean, you wouldn't amend the motion to say, to table it, because you wouldn't table something if it didn't exist. Right?
Well, the, you'd be tabling your decision on the ordinance, because the ordinance is before you.
Right, but wouldn't, wouldn't that be a motion to defer then? And you wouldn't amend?
You know, John was the, was the Robert's Rules of Order expert. I, I would tell you, you probably, you know, maybe go either way.
I would, I would, as chair, I would say a motion to defer if that's what people want to do, until we get more information from staff, if someone wanted to make it.
So moved.
All right, is there a second on the motion to defer?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. All those in favor of deferring the motion to approve the ordinance until we get more information from staff, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All right, and we will get more information. Next up, we will have discussion and possible action.
Can I be very moving? What more information are you guys looking for? I mean-
I, I think from just hearing some things, one, how many, how many, if we can get a better idea of how many are actually out there, fiscal impact, and Alder Gaskell, Alder Touche, and Alder Riki?
Adjacent municipalities, how they're handling it, and frankly, I just need more time. I don't know that I need more information, I just need time to think about it, rather than try to process it.
Alder Touche?
I, impact, I mean, like, what are we, I, I mean, I, I appreciate our administrator trying to give us a sense, but just, you know, I, I know it's a tough question, because I mean, I, I mean, I saw as low as $35 a night, all the way up to 1,700, which blew my mind, but, a night. But, you know, what's, what's realistic? I mean, I, I know we're kind of taking a shot in the dark here, but I just, I feel like we're creating extra bureaucracy. And, and trust me, I've, I've approved and discussed plenty of ordinances, I just, how many do we need to keep adding? And this one just seems a little silly to me. So, what's, what are we really talking about? And what's the, what, what's the realisticness of, yeah, we, we think there's this much rental going on, but we might collect 10%? You know, because I really just see people not bothering getting a license, and therefore I'm not going to pay taxes and I'm going to keep renting it out. And who's going to scour Airbnb and find out when something becomes unavailable and start knocking on doors? That just seems silly.
Alder Riki?
I just wanted to get a better sense of if these home, home rentals are happening more when there probably are no vacancies in the hotels anyway, when there's big events in the area, that people would not have vacancy in hotels anyway? And what percentage is, is that? And also, oh, there's one other thing. That's okay. I think it'll probably be addressed in the other questions.
Any other things people would like to add? Alder Posey?
I think a lot of it is similar to whatever everyone's been saying, but that data and the information, how, how many are we actually dealing with? I think for me personally, just having that time to look at the state statutes and see what's already on the books and what is already expected from the state level of being enforced before we're throwing that out there. So that's more personal time for that I can look into that.
And I guess I'd add one as well. Is there any precedent for Airbnb or the other platforms striking a deal with a smaller city of Verona's size? Because like, we're not as big as New York City. And I know, I know Airbnb has some agreements with some bigger, bigger and municipal entities, but we, we clearly don't quite rate on that scale. So if there could be anything where it could be done automatically?
They, they actually have an agreement with the state. And when talking with the state on, I was under the impression that the state would collect the, the taxes and then divide it to the municipalities, but it's on the municipality to collect the tax. The state just allowed the, the ability for the rentals to, to be there. So, you know, the, the bigger cities like Madison do have agreements where specifically with Airbnb, that they're, they collect the money and, and provide it to the city. But on smaller cities, it, it reverts back to the state agreement. And the state's not interested in collecting that. It, it says it's the municipality's ability to, to collect that.
Any other things people would like to know? At least about that. Alder Journey?
So how did the site of get on the agenda? That's what I'm curious about.
Mr. McCroskey?
Based on the number of calls that we were starting to get, and the, the issue that came up at the council, I, we looked at it and realized that there's a lot of other cities moving this forward. So I started looking at whether it can be licensed. The, the room tax kind of fell in that, you know, we have the ability to collect that anyway, and that was kind of the, the first step. But just wanted to see if we needed to, to license something that it looked like it was starting to grow because of the events going on in the, in the community.
Alder Posey?
I think something to add to what we could learn is, we're talking about tourism, we're talking about community development, you know, how would those additional dollars be potentially utilized? What would be the benefit when we're talking impact? And what would be the kind of drawback from not having those brought in, but then also making things a little tougher for our residents who are benefiting from that, renting out their rooms?
So, so I think the answer to that question, I mean, it, the, the room tax dollars that are collected from the short-term rentals would be used for the same purposes that the room tax dollars are collected from hotel and motel. And I think we, you're going to correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we do have a tourism commission of the city of Verona, and I think that we have a contract with the chamber-
We're working on it.
-or working on it, that, and that's, that's what a lot of communities have done, is they, they, you know, a community collects the room tax, and then the new statute, you know, you have to contract with a tourism entity that then has to spend the money on the defined term of tour, you know, basically, you, you collect it so that you can get even more people in, you know, to, to, to the hotels and to the, to attract tourism, I guess. So it would be the same purpose.
Sorry. I, and that I understand, and I already understood that. I was just more going on the side of, do we have some specific things that we're looking to in the near future? Or that, like, what are we looking at? And I know we've just talked about with the CDA last session, you know, giving them some specific things to look at. So we don't necessarily have a lot of tangibles right now, but that was more what I was addressing, were those more specific things. Thank you.
And I guess we could potentially bring in the tourism coordinator to come in and talk about things like that. She seems, she's new, she seems really good, though. Anything else to add? All right. With that, we move on to 11C, discussion, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of operator licenses.
Thank you. I have operator license applications for Nicole Charles for Kahoots, William Thompson for Hop House, and Clayton Harrington for Wisconsin Brewing Company.
You've heard the list. Movements?
Move approval.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Riki, I think. All those in favor of approving the operator licenses, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Then motion passes. Next up, we will have item 12, adjournment, a motion to adjourn a repeat order. Motion by Ald, Alder, oh, sorry.
Did we have a vote on deferring this discussion?
Yeah. It was a motion by Alder Touche and seconded by Cole. Good to check, though. Motion to adjourn by Alder Touche, was there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And we are adjourned. Thank you.